Okay. It's now 6:33, May 20th. This is Edwin Choi calling the meeting to order. Should we start with a roll call?
Chair Alzner is on his way in. He said he'd be here by 7:00 PM.
Okay.
Commissioner Tao, hopefully will be joining us shortly. Commissioner Wood.
Yeah.
Commissioner Finley.
Here.
And Vice Chair Choi.
Here.
We also have joining us Commissioner, City Treasurer Pia. City Councilmember Jack Donovan did indicate he would be attending today also. So he's probably trying to get logged on or will be joining us shortly also, but he did indicate he would be here. Okay.
Shall we move on to the first item, which is the draft master fee schedule?
Yes, the first item on your agenda this evening is our draft master fee schedule. In just a moment, I will invite Albert to give you a description of what we did to update the fee schedule. As you're aware, a few years ago, two years ago, the city embarked on a new master fee schedule. According to the resolution that was adopted by the city council, the finance director is authorized to increase fees by the amount of the CPI. And we'll go into a little bit detail when Albert gives his presentation each year. And it is on your work plan that it's something that the Finance Commission will review before this new fee schedule is implemented. So it's on your agenda this evening for your review and I will turn it over to Albert.
Hi, everyone. So regarding the master fee schedule, I think you guys recall we adopted the master fee schedule at the end of fiscal year 2019 to be effective initially in fiscal year 20. And as Elaine said, that we increased the CPI, we increased the fees by CPI. Not every single fee gets increased by CPI. It's based on determination of whether or not it makes any sense to increase these fees. So certain fees, they're fixed until there's a new study that happens. But for fiscal year 2021, we did increase the fees by CPI. Unfortunately, Finance Department assessed the wrong information in terms of the timing of when, what period of the CPI that we should be using. So when we were doing, when we were preparing the master fee increase for last fiscal year, we utilized December 2020's CPI based on the LA Long Beach area. And just this year, we kind of reviewed our calculations and reviewed the documentations. And we determined that it should have been February. So let me share my screen regarding what the CPI is for the Long Beach, Long Beach, LA area. So this is what we gathered from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. And as you can see, it's for the LA area and it suggests that it's LA, Long Beach and Anaheim. And the percentage that we use is found in this page. So in 2021, we used 3% for our calculation for CPI increase. And under our resolution, we actually, there was a clear indication that we should have used February. So we were slightly undercharging for certain fees for the entire fiscal year. And the upcoming fee increase will probably try, will actually try to catch it up by calculating the prior year based off of 3.4% and then increase it by another 1%. So let me pull up a calculator to kind of determine, show you guys how we determined the amount. Where did it go? Okay. So instead of using 3%, we need to be, we need to use 3.4%. And we'll apply an additional 1% based on the upcoming master fee, fee increase. So we will be using 4.434% across the board for the various fees that we determined that should be increased. And I know you guys received this, this proposed fee for fiscal year 2022. And this is, this is after the calculation using the 4.43, 4.434%. So let's see, I could show you in a spreadsheet how we calculated it. So here's the 4.43% that we use to determine. And not every single fee gets increased. It's in the resolution, it indicates that we need to round it up by the nearest dollar, but not every single fee is based on dollar amounts. So as you can see, there's duplication fees that are 10 cents. And with those situations, anything under $5, we assess a 10 cent increase each time. I know that's not in the actual resolution, but it doesn't make any sense to wait till it gets up to the nearest dollar to increase that fee. So staff determined to use a rounding of 10 cents when it gets to that point. Now here's one fee that staff has determined that we have undercharged based on the master fee schedule, and that is the transaction fee. Let me see if I can find it. Let's do here.
So Albert, while you're looking for it, just a question. Will you have a note to the fee schedule that says exactly what you're doing about the 10 cents?
We could definitely add that to the resolution.
Somewhere that, you know, explains it. So it's in writing and everyone else knows it.
I believe because of this, this new, this credit card transaction fee that we're going to bring up to, we may need to consider revising the fee and the resolution on it. So we will consider adding the language in that new resolution.
Great. Thank you.
So the credit card transaction fee, it was determined to be, I believe, 2.5%. There's a rounding error here. It should show 2.5%. Well, actually, that's wrong too. I don't know if that's right, but the original adopted credit card transaction fee was 0.25%. And I don't know how it was determined to, how the study determined that we should use 0.25%. But basically, the city is paying about $143,000 in credit card transaction fee for this fiscal year up until current. And 0.25 barely recovers somewhere between $10,000 to $15,000. So the taxpayers or the water utility pay, like water utility revenues are covering for the supplementing the, the cost of the credit card transaction fee. So staff is actually coming to ask the finance commissioners what they would advise us to do. We have a few propositions. So one of it is to base it off of at cost. So some of the costs is, I believe, 3% for certain credit cards. And some other credit cards can be higher. So we could either go at cost or a fixed percentage based on averages or, or whatever information we can gather.
Over some of our credit cards are even higher than 3%? You mean like an Amex and stuff?
Correct. American Express. They are generally higher than the other credit cards.
I've also seen people just not accept Amex.
The city may consider not accepting American Express as an option as well.
Yeah, because 3% is already kind of on the higher rate. I actually don't recall. So do you know what happens when like people pay their like electricity bills and stuff to you guys if you put it on your credit card? Do they charge you a credit card fee or is it already billed into the bill such that it's kind of like people just assume that, you know, they pay with credit cards. So the bill is just higher by that on average.
Yeah, we wouldn't know.
My understanding there's a convenience fee associated with using a credit card and no convenience fee for doing ACH.
Okay.
And I would like to just add, because this one fee would be increased by more than the CPI, obviously. This is a fee, we would like to see your, determine your recommendation on it. But this fee will need to go to the council for formal approval because it exceeds the authority in the resolution. But I know that the council would appreciate your input and discussion in this. I have heard that there was some sensitivity regarding this, this transaction fee. But when we did the analysis to show how much the city is subsidizing the use of credit cards, you know, it isn't a small amount.
As I recall, oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Alan.
As I recall, when we discussed this originally and worked on the fee schedule, the goal was to make, leave the city in a position where they were subsidizing as little as possible. And in many cases, it was not possible that we could really do that. We really did end up with the city subsidizing a number of things. And I think that in this case, my personal feeling is that it should be actual cost.
Yeah, I mean, quick question on the, the current number. So the current number is 0.25%? I mean, is, and that's not a, that was not a typo of some kind? I mean, it seems odd that it was set to be like less than 10% of our actual cost. Like why even bother charging if we're just going to charge that little?
You know, I don't want to put Lucy Dimersian, she's in this meeting right now on the spot. But she did oversee this fee study. Perhaps she has to, because it is a very, 0.25 is a quarter of a percent.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And my recollection was that it was just an introductory fee. And the idea was to increase it like every year. But in practice, obviously, it does not work. Now, within the research that the consultant did, they did look at other cities to compare. And the 2% fee is much more in line with what other cities charge.
Okay. So it was 0% not too long ago and?
We never charge a transaction.
Oh, that was the first.
That was introductory, yeah, when we first did the comprehensive study.
I recommend that we go with 2.5, 2.25%.
Is that, Albert, is that roughly our cost, the 2.5 percentage?
The, you, the average cost, I believe, is more along the line of like 3%.
Okay.
Yeah, I like the idea of I could have something less than that just because law doesn't allow us to recover more in fees than what it costs us. And so we have an individual cardholder that has 2% fee. Yeah, there could be some issues there to go to two and a half or three, the higher end. Because there could be the lower charge cards. So you know, the happy median is somewhere not at the bottom and not near the top.
Also, should we think about like, is there any way to negotiate down our fees with the credit card company? I mean, it also seems like it's a pretty high number.
We actually have a banking expert on our staff. Armenia is sitting there shaking her head, no, we've actually approached this and tried it. And Armini, you're welcome to comment.
Yeah. And so that's basically the cost that they charge pretty much everybody, even financial institutions. When they do have a credit card company, they utilize this third party that does this for them. And there's always a fee attached to it.
I just didn't know if it was possible to get back down to like more like two versus three.
Debit cards, you can. It's slightly less than the credit card transaction fee. But there's always one attached, banks will sharing that fee a little bit. So there's negotiation, but they negotiate with their parties.
Yeah. Or so right now are the two options you want us to consider? Just pure actual costs and some kind of flat fee that accounts for the typical cost?
Correct. Just a few pros and cons. I do know it would be, I like the idea of actual cost. The problem with that is we will then need to always be aware of what American Express is versus Visa versus MasterCard. And if they change it and so it can be done, it's just a little more work and a little more chance for error as opposed to something that's a number that's in the middle.
Here's another thing to consider is if we charge 2% fee, what are people going to do for payment? Like, are they going to just start mailing in checks? And is that, is there going to be more work and hassle and loss related to checks getting lost in the system somewhere?
That's a good question.
The, the other option would, that would be free for, for our residents. Even if you go to LA County and try to pay your property taxes, they will have two options. One is ACH, the other is credit card. And they will always pass on the charge for the credit card to the, to the residents.
Okay, so ACH is what we're, I mean, it's just, we have a lot of seniors and my guess is they're, may not be setting up for ACH and any kind of like computer type of stuff necessarily.
Right. And most of them are actually checks.
Already. So, okay, so then, I mean, I'm definitely in favor of trying to recover much more of this than what we're currently recovering. But if you think, Elaine, that 2% is kind of as high as we can go legally without it being a mess, then I guess maybe 2%, but it sounds like we're more, we're closer to the two and a half percent range in actual cost if not three.
Right. Except that there are some credit cards only at two. I don't know of any at 1%. Most are two and higher. So that's which is why I'm comfortable with two without exposing the city to some unnecessary, you know, complaints or litigation or whatever might happen.
And how about debit cards? You said that debit cards might be lower. So would they be charged the same fee?
Debit cards, no.
Yeah.
The same debit cards?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
They have Visa logo. It kind of functions the same way. In some cases, that may be the ones where she's seeing a 2%. Generally, credit cards are slightly higher than that.
Okay. Oh, so the 2% is the debit card range?
Yeah, it's a debit card with the logo on it. So it functions like a credit card. It just has like slightly more of a fee.
So it sounds like nobody is in favor of trying to recover actual costs due to the complexity. So it's just a matter of where do we set the, kind of the flat fee?
You know, you could, you know, Lucy mentioned phasing in, going from 0.25. You could do one direct staff to let the council know 1% this year, 2% next year, just jump to 2%. I know that they would, they would appreciate your insights on that. And that's one thing to consider. So there's not a sticker shock.
You know, given where we've been charging, a two, going to 2% would be quite a jump. You know, maybe considering an increase to one this year and communicating all this. Going to one this year with the intention of going to two next might be a compromise.
Any other, any other thoughts on phasing it in versus just doing it?
Um, I feel like we can probably just do it. I mean, it's kind of like, are you going to pay a fee or not? If you're willing to pay a fee, then you pay it. If you're not willing to pay a fee, you set up ACH or you set up some kind of other automatic payment. And you might as well do it this year versus saying, okay, I'll pay 1% this year and try to set it up next year when the city charges me 2%. So, but you know, I'm happy whichever way.
Yeah, I see the way.
You guys have strong opinion. I just, maybe giving them, people like, you know, let them know, like give them a, some kind of a transition timeline or once and say, you know, this is your one month to pay on credit card where, I don't know, just set it up. I don't know. How do they pay on credit card? Is it online?
Online and here at city hall in person.
Yeah, or like, you know, in person, just have a big sign and online, have a big sign on, you know, banner on the website that says, look, we're phasing in a fee for credit cards per the new fee schedule. You could also set up ACH, which pays, it'll be free. So please do so.
I know that when I, when I pay my utilities online and the payment options are presented to me, it's very clear that there's a transaction fee for using a card and no transaction fee for using ACH. So the, you know, the choice is made with full knowledge, whichever way you want to go. And some similar kind of disclosure at the counter would be appropriate, of course.
Yeah. I don't know how they would do for permitting, because does, do you guys get ACH immediately or is there a lag? Because I know I've been paying various permitting fees. And there's always kind of a transaction fee, but like you said, it's so tiny, it's 0.25% like that. I don't really notice about what would people do for permitting and building and that side of things for their credit card payment?
We'll take about 24 hours. When they initiate it, assuming they initiated as of that day, you will get credit the following day. But if they get a confirmation for setting it up, I don't know if that may be sufficient to go off of.
Yeah, I don't know the answer because I know some people are trying to like, kind of really, you know, get the permit pulled and get the process started. So I don't know. That may need a more timely confirmation.
Any other thoughts on phasing it in versus just instituting it?
I think that you let people know, how, when would this start?
July 1st. Fee's going to affect July 1st, start of fiscal year.
So, so if we put it out, and we won't be able to put it out until when will the council hear this if we finish it tonight?
June, June the 2nd?
No, that agenda is already dead. It would be the second, the second council meeting in June.
Then that's not a lot of warning. Otherwise, I think that, I just, I think that the city is paying too much. I mean, you know.
And, and the council could, could adopt it effective July 1st, but they can always direct staff not to begin charging it until August 1st. That would be under their prerogative to do.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
That sounds.
Yeah.
Let's do that.
Yeah. Yeah, I would agree. I think, you know, my, I think just to simplify, just setting the fee now and, you know, kind of foregoing the ramp up schedule, I think would be easier to understand. But having the grace period where there's more time for communication. If it's a month or if it's even longer, I mean, I think that's fine too. You know, depending on when they actually get around to communicating, I think that would be fair.
I agree with, I agree with that one. I think that, you know, maybe it's two months. Maybe that just is fairer. And gives people a chance to deal with it.
Okay. And we do have, of course, Councilmember Donovan on this meeting. So he will relay those thoughts and make sure the, the council is aware of your, your thought process in this.
I did notice a negative variance in the proposed fee schedule versus the previous one on the meals for seniors. And I kind of liked it. That was $2.80 in the previous fiscal year versus $2.75 for this year. And if that is an accurate proposal, I'm in favor of it. Did we agree on the credit card fee rate? Is it, is it 2%?
There hasn't been a motion made yet. And I'm just double checking. There's no one in the public that we need to take input from because they're not here. But it would be at your, once a motion made and you vote on it. But no, no decision has been made yet, Commissioner Finley. Or was that Treasurer Pia?
Fred, do you want to make a motion?
Sure, yes. I move that we increase the credit card fee from 0.25% to 2% at that, for the city council's approval.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hey, you're mute.
Hey, 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 you're mute.
Okay, that was everyone, I?
I'm going to abstain on that one.
Yeah, okay. I'm in favor. Okay. Anyone want to post? Is that right? Okay. All right.
Alzner abstained.
Yeah.
Okay.
And now the second item today, the draft financial policies.
Yes, that is mine. Before you, I presented, it was, as you can, if you reviewed the two policies side by side, you can see that it was really not effective to prepare a redline version. I apologize for that because it changed so much, your whole page would just be red. I did provide the current version separately, what was adopted when the city council adopted the 2021 financial policies and versus the draft that's before you this evening. I would like to receive your input regarding the draft and any other changes or modifications you might want to make. The primary changes between the two, there was an attempt made to be more specific regarding the deadline for things would be the first area I would describe. When does a budget exactly go to council? When does a mid-year budget go to council? There's also an increased responsibility on staff to provide regular financial reporting on a set schedule. We are proposing a quarterly financial update to the city council as opposed to monthly financial reporting for our first, for the first year at least of attempting this. The other significant difference between the two proposals is we are significantly changing, if you go to section, let's see, risk management, section nine, it's section nine on the new policy. You'll see that that is very, very different from the prior year policy. That is the result of a decision to treat our insurance, this sort of came up, you might recall some of the discussion from the 2021 budget approval and why the insurance amount increased so much. We are now treating the insurance internal service fund as a true internal service fund. There's actually a GASB requirement that requires us to do this because we are partially self insured. So in layman's terms, we are required to do an actuarial analysis or some kind of analysis to determine what our total liability is and put that on the books. We're not required to fund at 100%. This policy establishes a goal of funding it at 70%. And And you will see when the 2020 audit is presented to you, that's the first year that this fund is being established, and it is going to show a large negative number, because we didn't fund it wholly, as you're aware, there wasn't, was 1.2 million. We didn't fund it entirely in 2020. We added, we're adding some more money in the fiscal year 2022 budget to this fund. But even with adding that amount, the fund is still going to be negative to the tune of about $800,000. It's, it is a big number, but I always remind folks to, we're, we're very clear in this policy, which is why you see it stated in here. It's going to take two to three fiscal years to make up for something that the city could have been doing since, I'm trying to think, when we first got away from the JPA and went to self-insurance, it's been-
I believe it was 2014.
2014, something we should have started in 2014, we started in 2020. Um, so it's going to take some time to get this fund fully, fully funded. And the other thing I like to remind everyone is, we will never have to pay all of the liability in a certain year, because as you're aware, some big claims will take two, three years till they're resolved. So, what the city had been doing in the past is doing a pay-as-you-go, as the claims came in and the costs came in, the city paid them. We're going away from a pay-as-you-go to actually trying to set aside whatever the total estimated liability is for our, for our liability, our claims, our judgments, our lawsuits, and, and actually start setting aside money for that. So our hope is that we don't get fully funded in 2022 proposed budget, because the draft of that is pretty much ready for you, because you're meeting on that next week. It's still about $800,000 negative, so the hope is over 23 and 24 to get this fund fully funded. But the language in this policy has been revised to require, I mentioned the 70% confidence level, and to specify that an actuarial analysis will be done to determine what the city's total liability is, and that our goal is to maintain a balanced liability fund. There's also the last bullet here, where we will report annually to the Finance Commission and the council on, to present claims information, amounts paid out, steps taken to manage and reduce the city's risk and liability. That'll be a new report you'll start seeing on an annual basis. It'll probably be a consent calendar item for the city council. Again, it's just an attempt to increase our, the transparency of our operations. That's a major, a major change in the policy. The other one is, the rest of the, the policy, really, the major changes were really primarily, oh, on, as you recall, our finance committee also wanted us to provide some more guidance regarding our reserves. If you notice, on general fund reserves, it's night, item number five on the draft. We actually define, so people will know reading this, what the four kind of reserves are, what they're supposed to be used for. We will still continue to list what our committed or designated reserves are, but there's also a little section below that, that will require the city council annually to review the reserves, to specify specifically what the reserve is intended for, to get specific direction from council, whether it's a one-time designation, or whether, for example, to build up an internal, another, set aside money for street repairs. The city, the staff should put aside $200,000 a year, for example. Is it an ongoing? Is it one time? And ultimately, of course, the city council has the authority to redesignate these monies at any time. We can't take that authority away from them to decide to undesignate it, use it for something else, decide to undesignate it, just let it go into our general undesignedated reserves. That's the last bullet, just again, to make it clear to the public, ultimately, the city council determines how these funds will be used and what they're designated for. So it just provides a little bit more information, a little more guidance of how the designations are made. Uh, let's see. Those would be it in a nutshell. I know you've, if you have any questions at this point, something you think's interesting that I've added, primarily is just trying to put some more specific direction regarding deadlines and timing and documentation and responsibilities. So that way, the commission and the public and the council can look at this and say, you know, we're doing a mid-year budget in February, where is it? And hold everyone more accountable. That concludes my staff presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions on this. This is sort of a work in progress. I see it being enhanced even more in fiscal year 23. This is an incremental process. I have only put in this the things that I believe are realizing to, we're going to have, South Pasadena is going to have a brand-new finance director, you know, getting acclimated, getting up to speed. I was asked a question, why isn't the financial reporting monthly, Elaine? I explained to put that on top of a new director, on top of everything else that has to be done in the department. Why set them up for failure? Quarterly reporting is, is an improvement, and it will provide timely information, regular information, and that perhaps the commission, you can remember this, when we get to fiscal year 23, you may want to recommend monthly financial reporting. Once we get to the point where everything's up to date, everything's on time, and, and set that as a new goal.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That concludes my report.
Okay, I have a question. On the annual budget, it looks to me like, I mean, the dates you have in there, are those realistic dates for forever, or are those because we're catching up?
Those are because we're catching up.
Okay.
Your, your, your new one for 2023 should have some significantly pushed back dates. This is again, what, what's achievable based upon what we can do today. Normally, ideally, you're right, the proposed budget really should be ready to present to the commission in, you know, April. May is a little, because you just have May and June, has to be adopted by June 30th. So ideally, that would eventually be pushed back, so it goes to you in April and goes to the council in May, to give them plenty of time.
With enough time for public comments.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, great, thanks.
So- Sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, I have a question about item number 13, the long-term liabilities. And one question would be, what is, how does that interact with the, the risk management section that you talked about earlier? But also, when it, when it says the city shall evaluate long-term liabilities, who specifically in the city will, will be doing that?
Uh, we can be more specific. The long-term liabilities, it, we, I separated out the liability section into a separate section. So this section of, you're right, our liability anticipated costs are long-term liability. I just separated out, this long-term liability has more to do with debt, bonds, our compensated absences, I probably should take out claims, claims and judgments, that's a typo, thank you. Pensions are definitely a long-term liability, as is our post-employment benefits. We can add in the description below, the unbolted part. I do have that the Finance Commission's work plan includes evaluating the refinancing of the city's water bonds and evaluating alternatives to plan for the OPED, other post-employment and pension liabilities. We could be more specific there, if you would like. And insert dates, or it's really going to be the, the finance director presenting it to the Finance Commission, and then it going to the city council. I can add that specificity in there, if you would like.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful. Then we just know who's, you know, the, the person responsible for it, and, and when we can expect to, you know, get the information about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and those liabilities are generally included in our financial statements with the CAFR, right?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, okay. So.
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
There is, as you know, there has been for a while in South Pasadena, is all cities, to really get a handle on these long-term liability, especially the post-employment benefits and the PERS pension costs, and there are alternatives and plans out there. Of course, it, it comes down to putting more money into those plans in one way or another. And that's something that the commission, the council has already asked the commission to please evaluate, review, and make a recommendation to the council. The chair did call me earlier this week, your chairman, to find out, originally, we were hoping to bring the the alternatives for the pensions and OPED to you. I, this month or next month, but we are so swamped with audit and budget right now. Audit is, is hot and heavy, literally, and budget trying to get that to you next week. I anticipate the soonest we'll be able to get that to you. I'm really aiming for August, September at the latest. We'll get over this hump of the budget and audit and be able to concentrate and do a good job on presenting alternatives to you. So I'll put those dates in here.
Um, can I go back to number five and just risk management? So which one, what liabilities do we self-insure at this point?
It's our general liability, property damage. So that's like somebody sues the city for whatever reason.
I thought we were a part of some like multi-city pool for that.
Not anymore. The city got out of, it was the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority. The city left that pool in 2014, is Albert's recollection. And then we went to a, it's a hybrid, we're, as this, as this mentioned, we're self-insured up to a certain dollar level, and then we purchase excess insurance above that.
How much are we self-insured for?
Um, it's in the notes here. Our general, our workers' compensation, we're totally completely self-insured with a, our retention is, everything above 125. And then general liability, our self-insured retention is $100,000 per covered claim.
So, our city lawsuit, just for example, this Allison Smith lawsuit that's been going on, that's basically whatever ends up being the case, if we do lose, the city pays 100, and everything else is covered by some other insurance claim?
I don't know the specifics of specific claims, so I really can't speak to that. I'm not the risk manager, our, that's in our human resources department. But hypothetically speaking, if there is a claim out there and it is a covered claim, the city pays all the costs, the judgment, everything. When everything's settled, the insurance company reimburses the city the amount above the self-insured retention.
Then, who makes the decision of whether to settle early or take it all the way through then?
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know Zen, again, I'm not, we don't do risk management in, in finance. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know how it works. Okay. I don't know how we do that.
All right. Risk manager. Is there someone looking over our risk management policy, just because it directly impacts how much we're paying?
Like you said, our, our HR department, we do have an HR manager who oversees our risk management program.
Does anyone oversee her decisions?
Yes, sure. City manager, ultimately, the city council.
Okay. Which is- Yeah, I'm just thinking, especially if we're now more self-insured, and we have all of this liability, like, someone should kind of, there should be a policy on their end, then, that says, in what circumstance do we pay? Or in what circumstance do we pay the lawyer, and in what circumstance do we pay the claimant, right? Like, there has to be a policy on that side. Dictate that.
Yeah, the reason, in an ideal world, yes, the reason I'm hesitant to speak, I can speak on my experience in, in another city where I was a city manager. When it comes to those decisions, those are closed-session decisions, where even if, you know, when to settle, what to settle, those are all closed-session decisions, and you really can't have a set rule on when and where and why, because every case differs so much. It, it, you can't have a, a set policy on that, you really can't, because each case is so different. Even you have two car accidents, two automobile accidents, you know, the, the individual claims could be so different, it's, it's difficult to have a set policy on that. Ultimately, you know, those are things that happen in closed session, to be honest.
Yeah, I mean, it's just interesting, because it's kind of like, who, who has that decision power, right? Because if we always just settled early, then the insurance will never have to pay out, because we would be under the 100K, let's say, for example, or, you know, does insurance say, you should settle, and if you don't settle, I'm not paying this, because it's, you know, BS, and you guys haven't settled it. Then, we're, are we then on the hook for all of it? It's, I don't know how they would actually balance that, it's just something I was thinking of. But, okay, I mean, it sounds like we have a lot of catching up in that account.
Well, you know, in, 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 in response to your question, that's part of the reason why, at least now, assuming the policy gets adopted as, as it is, at least now, there will be some kind of annual report that HR will be preparing and presenting, which will talk about claims, amount paid, what we're doing to manage and reduce our risk. So at least there'll be more information than, than what's available now, assuming this, this stays as it's currently drafted. There'll be more information, at least.
Okay, and can I also make a suggestion to Ellen's point? If this is, the timelines in this is just because we're behind for this year, maybe we put what the long-term goal is, and just put an addendum for this year on certain timelines, and say, for this year, you know, be, given that we're still in catch-up in 2020, 21, this is kind of what we're looking at, just so next year, we have a long-term goal, kind of like, let's do it in one step versus trying to figure out what the ultimate targets are next year again.
Um, I'm trying to think how we did, if we could do that, I'm trying to think how we would do it. What, what's your idea?
No, I mean, just to, for what Ellen was saying, right, like, some, when these things, the budget, et cetera, should be presented, when, when they should be first, like, just, let's put what we ideally like to see with an addendum that says, you know, kind of, for this next fiscal year, we acknowledge that this is not realistic, because we're so behind, but let's just set a policy that ideally, we're not changing dates every year on.
Okay, so I understand what you're saying. It is possible, for example, take the budget, push the dates back to ideally what they should be, and down here, just where I say the policy was not achieved for 2021, I would rewrite it, that we're also not going to achieve it for 2022. I mean, this can, we can definitely do that. Put in our ideal dates now and acknowledge upfront, we're not going to meet them this time.
Yeah, I mean, that's just something, I, I figure, if we're dealing with it this year, we might as well deal with it this year, and next year, it's just, you know.
I guess, the one, the one thing that I would say to that Zen, ideally, that's perfect. I mean, I'd like to see that. But, we can't, we don't have, we don't know what's going to happen next year. And again, in this year, we have a, a new finance director, maybe, coming on. Unless Elaine just decides she loves us so much, she's going to stay here forever. So maybe that might not, maybe this should be addressed again next year, rather than trying to put that on a new person. I don't know, Elaine is, what's your feeling on that?
Um, you know, as long as it's, it's explained, as long, I, yeah, I'm fine with either way. I obviously, I drafted it this way initially, because it's doable. I wanted to present what was doable. But it's also possible to put in the ideal dates and explain upfront that we're not going to do that this, we're not going to meet it this year. Either way works.
I mean, I, I think you can put the ideal dates, and then when you're explaining, oh, this year is a special case, when you're explaining that, instead of just saying we're not going to meet it, we can also just say, okay, this year, we're going to do this in May instead of April, or we're going to do this in June instead of May. So at least you have the, the long-term goal that theoretically, we shouldn't have to change year to year, and then you, at some, next year- And then you, at some, next year, we can just scrap out that final paragraph of each section. So I I I think, you know, we, there's still a way to have the target, you know, the special case target in there without just saying, this is ideal, this year we can't make it, you can say, this is ideal, this year, our target is this instead.
No, and I see a benefit to that, so that way, when the new finance director starts, they come in knowing what the expectations are, there's a benefit to that.
Yeah.
I see that.
Yeah, that's true, I agree.
Okay, I will revise it.
Yeah. And then, uh, kind of going back on the um, insurance, um, in your experience, are are those numbers pretty in line with other cities of our size, like the hundred K, a hundred fifty K?
You know, it really, it really varies, and as you're aware, you know, it's um, basic economics, the higher the self insured retention, the lower you're, the less amount you're going to pay for the policy for the excess. Uh, and I do know, I can tell you that that is one of the projects that the HR manager has on his to do list, is to take a look at our insurance programs and see where that um, ideal spot would be, you know, because if you increase the SIR, the city's going to be paying more. But if you, you're going to have a less cost for insurance. Um, so there's, there's a happy medium in the middle somewhere, and I know that it is on his work plan um, to look at at exactly that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, because in in general, these insurance companies are making a profit, obviously, right? So, the the premium that we're paying, on average, we would expect is more than we would pay ourselves.
Yeah, and it keeps getting much, much more expensive every year.
Yeah.
It increases much more than our CPI, let me tell you.
I I have a question about the um, actuarial, actuarial study for the risk management, it seems like, uh, I'm just wondering if if my impression is correct, that that may also have a little interplay with predictions on how um, legal cases are going to play out. Um, you know, potential judgments and things like that, is that correct? And
Correct.
I wonder how how far the the study is going to actually go into the details of specific cases, I'm guessing they won't, but but it may address those in some general way, though.
Yeah, and it consolidates, because some of this is confidential information. It consolidates in such a manner that you really don't know what the detailed claims are and how much per claim. Um, for confidentiality reasons, but it does take into account. Um, the city uses Carl Warren as their claims administrator, and they, I can tell you, they do public claims administration for most of the cities in California, literally, I don't, um, every city I've ever worked in has used him, uh, and so they're the ones who develop the how much should be set aside for a specific claim. And they do it for, you know, they've been doing it for a long time, so yes, they take all of that into consideration, but when you see the actuary report, there isn't any level of detail, definitely not a per claim detail, um, for confidentiality reasons. You don't want to tell the world how much you think you're going to settle for.
Right, right, exactly, exactly. Um, are are we doing that, and you will actuarial study already, or is that?
Yes, we did one this year already, to do the twenty twenty audit.
Got it.
HR, HR secured the services to do that.
Thank you.
And any other thoughts on the, the policy? Should we check on public comments?
Yes, is there anyone from the public? No one has raised their hand. You are good um, to make a motion, um, if you would like, chairman, have someone make a motion.
Sure, anyone make a, and and this is to um, send it to the city council for approval?
As, as um, as revised by you this evening.
Okay, with those suggestions of uh, the dates.
Right.
Okay, uh, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. All in favor?
I.
Okay. All right, the third item now?
The third item is is a fun one.
Yeah. South Saks.
Enjoy seeing, um, I don't know if Albert can pull up the 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 colorful um, newsletter, two page newsletter, if you can share a screen. This is your annual, or I should say, your quarterly sales tax update. This would be for the fourth quarter, yes, it does lag six months behind. Um, this would be for the fourth quarter, which covers, it's a calendar year, which covers a period of October to December. Um, we should have, we're a little behind, we were a little behind in getting this update, because we got a little swamped and didn't have the meeting. Your new update will be coming pretty soon, you're, we're going to turn around and get a new update for you pretty quickly. But um, I didn't want to skip this one, um, so this is the fourth quarter, which is October to December. Um, similar to the, the update we presented to you the last time, um, the, our county and state pools, as you can see on the chart at the top, continue to be performing. When they do this report, they always compare fourth quarter of the current twenty twenty to the fourth quarter of twenty nineteen. Those are the two columns you see there, so similar to the last quarterly update, our county and state pools are performing wonderfully, those are all of the online orders, and you'd be surprised how much of that is Amazon alone, it's just mind boggling, uh, food and drugs held a little bit uh, steady this time. Uh, not much change, really not much change, I would say restaurants picked up a little bit, but they're still lagging from last year, that's the third bar, you, third, third set of bars you see. Uh, it did pick up a little bit from the previous quarter, but still nowhere near where we were a year ago. Uh, general consumer goods, again, a little lower than it, than a year ago, building and construction, a slight uptick. One of the areas that has taken the, one of the biggest hits, of course, is fuel and service stations, because as people stayed home and were no longer commuting, um, they weren't putting gasoline in their car. And then uh, business and industry and and auto staying, staying flat. The end result of um, this update, uh, we do look at, they do revise what the city should include in its annual budget as a result of getting actual data, we can update what our our revenue number should be for sales tax. And as a result of this update, there wasn't a significant change, in fact, what's interesting is that they, they revised our general sales tax number down slightly. But then our measure A revenue was revised upwards slightly. Um, the end result being, uh, they are now predicting HDL, who does this work for us, a sixty thousand dollar, about sixty thousand dollar increase in sales tax receipts between measure A and sales tax from the last quarterly update to this one. So we have reflected in the budget document you're going to see next week a sixty thousand dollar increase, because as you know, we need every dollar we have, we can, a sixty thousand dollar increase in our, our sales tax uh, estimate. Combined, both measure A and um, our general sales tax. Uh, this page always shows, I think it's interesting, who our top twenty-five producers are, pretty stable from quarter to quarter. Uh, again, this is an opportunity for a South Pasadena commercial, please continue to shop in South Pasadena. Uh, so that the city can receive the sales tax dollars. Um, it's an interesting list on there, um, we're very fortunate, Ace Hardware, Hardware came uh, to town from, from the first full quarter of operating, uh, they made the top twenty-five. Um, these are in alphabetical order, I want to emphasize, not in receipts, how much we received in sales tax, because that is confidential information. Uh, so these are just in alphabetical order.
I actually have no idea where House of Honey is.
You know, they're relatively new, they're one, they're one of the new, that, I don't know how long they've been open, but I have seen advertisements for them, coming across my, my.
They're on Mission already, huh?
It's a home decor firm.
Yeah.
Oh, it's home decor, okay.
They're right on Mission Street, they're very popular.
I would not have guessed that.
Yeah. Uh, the next page, have you done perusing those? Uh, the next page, the revenues by business group, I don't know if Albert can enlarge the screen for you a little bit, so we can see that pie chart a little larger. Um, similar to prior, the prior quarter, ever since COVID has hit, the county pool, State County Pool became our number one um, source, another quarter in a row at twenty-three percent of our total receipts for the quarter. Um, um, food and drug and restaurants, pretty close, neck and neck, twenty-two percent food and drug, nineteen percent restaurants. And then everything else, um, trailing behind it, consumer goods, uh, building, fuel, gas station. Uh, but again, similar to the previous quarter, um, our restaurants and our food and drug and our county pools are our three main sources of sales tax revenue. Um, down on the bottom of that chart is just a by business category, non-confidential business type. All of the business types aren't on here, because some of our business types, there's so few businesses in them that they can't print the report, because people would guess who they are, but this shows by business type, um, the increases and decreases um, for South Pasadena as compared to the county average, as compared to the state average. So for example, for grocery stores, South Pasadena had about a five point seven percent increase. Countywide, we performed a little better than the county, there are four point one increase. And we actually performed a little better than the state at five point three, um, at five point three for the state and five point seven. But that's what that chart shows, how how our um, primary business types performed comparing to the county and the state. And that concludes my presentation.
Um, quick question on the first page, um, what what is uh, those percentages, the minus fourteen percent? Uh, the minus seven point seven, minus two point O?
That's when they take, the the fourteen, fourteen point five percent in the first paragraph is if they take our total fourth quarter receipts and compare them to twenty nineteen's fourth quarter receipts. We're a little, we're a little down on this quarter.
Okay, so we've, we've decreased a lot more than the county and and even more so than the state.
Exactly, for this quarter. Mm-hmm.
Any comments on the South Saks report?
This is just a receive and file, chairman.
Okay, okay. So do we need to make a motion, or there's no motion for this?
You can make a motion to receive and file, that would be okay.
I'll move, receive and file.
I think, I'm on mute, I'm on second. All those in favor?
All right.
Yeah.
Um, and before we leave this evening, I would like to just a a brief comment about your next meeting. Um, staff is putting together the the proposed, the draft proposed budget document. Um, we hope, um, we're right, we're running it right up to the wire, and I apologize. We are, we, we might not be able to get it to you until Wednesday. We're aiming for Tuesday of next week, but it might be Wednesday, but as soon as it's done, you'll get it, it'll be ninety-five percent complete, and by that, I mean, it won't have a budget message yet, and it won't have, part of that is because, given the timing, um, this budget, when it gets to the council for approval, will have a new city manager. Um, so your, your draft won't have a budget message yet, it won't have, at the back of the budget document, all of those summary charts that we do, it won't have that, but you will have all of the numbers. You will have each of the department's budgets in there, you will have the capital improvement budgets, our fund, uh, our fund uh, reports. So you'll have everything else, all the numbers um, for your review. And uh, giving the timing of this, I I want you to feel comfortable, to not feel rushed. If you want to call a special meeting, uh, get through as much as you can next, next Thursday, and then call, finish it up at a special meeting the following, beginning of the following week, um, that's an option for you, because I don't want you to feel pressured, because you're getting it kind of late. I did already send you um, a link to the budget input we received um, to date, so I sent that, I think, yesterday. So you can start reviewing that in preparation for the meeting. And um, it will be, I do anticipate, we will have comments at that meeting, um, we are anticipate, we're going to have uh, an extra staff member um, help us with moderating the speakers. Um, because we do anticipate that one to be much more widely attended than tonight's meeting was. And we will be allowing live comments via Zoom, and um, that's it, so in the meantime, if any questions uh, come up, feel free to give me a call. Uh, but um, we're, we're working diligently to make sure we we get this to you uh, so that it will be ready for your meeting on May, was it twenty-seventh, whatever that Thursday is. And that's it, thank you.
And um, uh, just following up on a comment from much earlier, um, are are there any plans on in-person meetings or or, you know, the reopening schedule of some kind?
Um, I do believe we are still aiming for mid-July, I see um, council member, your council liaison, Jack Donovan, is that still what you've heard mid-July? You you're muted, Jack, sorry.
Okay, no, uh, that's still the uh, uh, that's still what we're trying for mid-July. We're lucky, really, but anyway, mid-July is the target date.
Will there still be an option to dial in, or is everyone being kind of mandated to go in person?
Oh, that's a good question, Zen, um. I, I don't know, I, I, I don't know, that's a good question. Um, you know, the assumption would have been that, you know, we'll go back to the the way of uh, you know, people coming in personally, but may, maybe not. Bring that up at the council meeting, that's a good question.
That's a good question, questions, and the other thing, I think, it's before my time, but I believe the finance commission used to meet in the um, conference room.
Yeah.
I can tell you, there would be a change in that, definitely.
Yeah.
Um, hopefully, there's not a conflict with using the council chambers, just because it's with with some kind of distancing.
Yes.
So we probably location, probably change the location, um, to allow everybody to sit a little further apart. Um, but no, Zen, that's a good question, I don't know the answer to that either, and council member Donovan will follow up on that for us.
Will do.
Um, a- any other uh, items we should discuss today? Okay, do you have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll move.
Yeah. Great.
Second.
Cool. All right, so the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
To everyone.
See you guys next week, get a lot of sleep.
Yeah. I'll be working all weekend, so get a lot of sleep. Bye-bye.
All right, thank you, bye-bye.
Bye.